Could be having some technical difficulties.
There we go.
Obviously. They can hear us. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Mark Denny.
So, what do you want me to do? This is the first time I don't know what to do.
Well, this is your application, so you're just sort of just letting them know what your, what your plans are and why you're requesting it. And they may have questions of you later on during the, during the hearing here.
Oh, yeah, because my house is so big to follow single family, so this is, um... I don't know what to say. Hello?
Uh...
Basketball team?
Basketball team, uh... We can't...
They can't hear us?
They keep popping.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, ma'am. I can hear you.
I can hear you.
No, I'm asking you to talk, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, keep talking.
Why didn't he say something? I don't know what to say.
You're fine, you're fine. Um...
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask if there's anybody else that would like to make a statement in this public hearing?
We can hear you well. Coming does not loud enough.
Okay. I was just asking if there was anyone else that wanted to make a statement for this public hearing, and nobody spoke up, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And now I would entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
Okay. Paul Schwaber made a motion.
Ray Knowles, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles. All right, we have a motion on the floor for approval of changing from Zone 2 to Zone 3. Now we are open for discussion.
Can, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, we're ready.
I don't know if I should direct it to Lee or to Ms. Gwynne, but my question is whether or not, um, so, so i- in, in the application, it said that it's not in a floodplain, but when I've talked to people, because I've gotten a lot of questions about that area regarding water issues, um, and that it's flooding, is, will the parking lot that they're proposing to or needing to add in, will that cause any water issues more than what we are already seeing over there?
They're gonna have to apply for a, a disturbance, a land disturbance permit with, with public works, uh, before they put it in, so, uh, any drainage caused by that, uh, parking area would have to be addressed in that, in their erosion control plan. And as far as retaining water from this calls from that on their side.
And then my, I have another follow-up question on that, is with the parking and us going to a multi, the, uh, R3 essentially, right? Um, how many parking spots, I can't remember off the top of my head, and I'm hoping you can, per unit is there, because I'm assuming that it's a basketball team, they're gonna have lots of friends that are gonna wanna come and visit, so I'm wondering if there's gonna be enough parking, um, to make sure that that doesn't get on our streets.
I'm gonna check the minimum parking for this right now.
Ooh, spaces.
According to us, it's one space per bedroom. Is the, uh, is the calculations in the, in the zoning ordinance. Uh, they're just gonna have to accommodate it, uh, parking on the streets, not a, uh, permissible, I don't believe, on that street or that section of the street. And, uh, you know, any parking on the grass, you know, as far as a temporary, like they have a sort of get-together or whatever, but they can't continuously park on the grass, that's against the regulations as well, too. Uh, it's gonna, the grass is gonna have to stay sowed, so there's no, uh, potholes or erosion or anything that's coming from the yard, uh, out onto the street or anybody else's property. So, I mean, there'll be requirements that are gonna have to be met when, you know, if they do have any type of get-togethers where they have more than the normal people that are living in the facility.
Because there's a lot of, you know, family homes in that area, and I could see them, you kn- you know, you know, I wanna make sure that that, that, that...
Um, can I jump in with a question here?
Sure.
Okay, so, w- we're actually, we're not approving the use, correct? We're just approving the rezoning from an R2 to an R3, so essentially, if we, if it becomes high-density residential, if one day somebody wanted to turn that into apartments or adapt it for another use, then they would have to, you know, get a different, they would have to redo the parking as well, correct?
Well, no one... Yeah, we're just giving a recommendation on the rezoning.
We're not talking about the use, right? Just the zoning, correct?
Well, yeah, the, the purpose, the reason why the use came up was, that was the reason why they wanted the rezoning.
Right, okay, so, but, um, later, if somebody wanted to adapt that property for a different use, then it would come before this board to, uh, or this commission to talk about the parking requirements and the stormwater runoff from, you know, the, to, as they relate to the parking situation.
Yeah, that would come in front of you guys, that would come in front of the Development Committee. We would, we would, we would meet and, and discuss the regulations for, as far as parking and drainage.
Right, so that's kind of my point, is that we're, we're, we're rezone, we're deciding about rezoning it, and so we're going, we're, we need to make a decision about whether we're gonna go from medium-density residential to high-density residential, and I don't think we should get too hung up on the, the use, if that makes sense. We just needed to decide whether high-density residential is appropriate for that area. Right?
All right. I do have one question. Um, we're talking about, what, five, six locations? Do they currently own all the locations? Are they planning on purchasing the locations? Or are we trying to rezone for locations that other people own right now? We've had that happen in the past.
Yeah, th- those, uh, one lot belongs to them, the other five belong to other individuals. Uh, the only way they was gonna get it rezoned legally would be to have all those rezoned to R3, or it would have been spot zoning, trying to rezone their lot by itself. And so that was what connected it to an existing R3 zoning district.
So, in essence, all three, six of these would be rezoned, but they are only wanting to put the boarding house on their property?
Yes.
Lee, have the owners of those other five been notified of this rezoning request?
Yeah, we sent a certified letter to each of the owners.
And none have responded or are here today?
Uh, none of them are here today. We had one that walked in, I had a discussion with them, they kind of knew the background of the property, uh, so they didn't really have an issue with it.
For those properties, they, they will still be in compliance, those other five, if we rezone it, to R3?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
So, does that mean, if those other properties, if they're being rezoned, then they can easily switch over to a multifamily unit as well, correct?
Well, they would be able to switch over to a congregate living, uh, type of facility like the applicants are, are requesting.
But, no, but I'm sorry, but we're talking about rezoning it for R3, which includes multiple different types of uses besides just a congregate boarding house. I mean, that, that's any high-density residential, so, again, I don't think just talking about allowing them, we're not rezoning them for a boarding house, we're rezoning them to R3, correct?
That was the application, yes.
Okay, so technically, any of these other lots that we're now going to rezone, they could put in high-density residential there as well, and we don't, they're not here, so we don't know what they plan to do. We just know that they don't have an argument against the, the, the congregate or the boarding house or the rezoning, but, right?
Yeah, I haven't, well, yeah, I have not received any, just beyond the, the visit from the, the owners of 507, uh, East Lincoln, I haven't received any, uh, comments or opposition.
Right, I'm sorry, I hope that doesn't sound like I'm being difficult, it's just that, just think we need to remember that we're talking about rezoning, we're not rezoning it for a boarding house, we're rezoning it again from R2 to R3, and it's not just this lot, it's multiple properties, so that it would not be spot zoning. So, we have created a workaround for spot zoning, is that basically what we're saying?
We're, they asked for it to be zoned, or asked how they would be able to, uh, accommodate a congregate living facility, and, uh, my, uh, you know, my advice to them was, this was really the only way that could be done legally, as far as being able to accomplish what they wanted to accomplish. Uh, if it still falls within, uh, several, uh, sections of our, of our land development plan or our comprehensive, uh, development plan as far as creating different types of housing and, and offering housing, different types and styles of housing within the community.
Oh, absolutely, I have absolutely no opposition to having o- um, options for housing. In fact, I support that. My only issue is that we're rezoning a, a block of contiguous lots to high-density residential, and I don't have any way of knowing what the others intend to do, so, with that, does, we, we, they essentially, they asked for a workaround, and we gave them one. They asked for a workaround for spot zoning, and so we said, just rezon this block, but the other property owners aren't here, so I don't really know who they are or what, what they might intend to do, because that, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just...
Shelley, they were given notice, so, I mean, they were given notice, and I think, I mean, you have to post something there as well, am I correctly, on the property?
Yeah, we posted a sign on the property as well.
And they were mailed, we make sure everybody gets mailed, so they were given notice, um, but that's...
We also, we also mailed all the contiguous property owners as well, too, with notices as well, so, I mean, it wasn't just the, the ones got certified mail was the actual owners, but everybody got noticed of it within a hundred feet of this house, or the, or the rezoning of all, all the lots, so...
Okay.
So, the whole area was notified.
Again, I'm in total support for options for housing, I just, there's a lot of historic properties and excellent housing stock in that neighborhood, that's a very residential neighborhood, I don't have a problem with their intended use, it's just that, um, if someone now wanted to come in and raise one of those historic homes and put in a multifamily property, they, they could, and so I just want to make sure that we're making an informed decision. Which, I will argue that using the zoning, outdated zoning map that we have, using that to inform any of our decisions is somewhat of an informed decision based on the fact that it's very outdated, so, but, that's all I have to say on that, I think I've made my, made my points.
Is anybody else having, I'm sorry?
Uh, is this, is this in the historic district, or is there a historic district there?
There is no historic district, and there is no historic zoning overlay. We have a historic zoning ordinance, but no overlay.
Okay, I just, um...
Let me make one, let me make one comment about, about this, providing housing for students at Montlo. Telehome is in dire need of student housing, not just for Montlo, but for the University of Tennessee Space Institute, students there are constantly looking for houses, so perhaps this is a start of accommodating that population with this, I agree that we're talking strictly about, and the rezoning ordinance right now, but this could be a start for furnishing something that's sorely needed in our community.
Do, do, are they gonna be using the ex- as, I don't know if this is a question, because we're approving the, the zoning change, not the use, but it, will the existing structures be what are being used to houses, or is it gonna be a new build?
No, they're just, they're just retrofitting the, the building, not really doing anything to it, they're just renting out the rooms to the, uh, to the, to the students, and then, of course, they have common areas like the den and the kitchen that they all use, but the, the house is gonna, uh, I don't believe they have any, in, changing the home or the structural look or, or of interior or exterior of the home. Uh, I mean, they're right here, you can ask them, but I mean, I, I don't believe that was their, their goal, it was just allow the students to live there.
Uh, not that anybody asked for a history lesson, but I will point, put out, point out, just so that you guys don't think I'm being disagreeable, that, uh, that whole area actually was identified by the Historic Society as being the college district, because it's the site of the original, uh, Middleton, uh, College of Middle Tennessee, before they moved it to, in, in TSG to Murphy'sboro, so, maybe it's a great spot for call, for student housing. It already has the name, so...
All right, any other questions? All right, with that, I will call the question, and, um... We have a motion on the floor, and it is, uh, move to approve the recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen from changing the zoning to R2 to R3. I will individually call your name, and we will go from there. Uh, Paul Schwaber.
Aye.
Ray Knowles.
Here, yes, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Rupert Blackwell?
No.
Shelley Smith?
No.
All right, now with the final vote? I will move to approve. Motion passes 4 to 2. Next on the agenda is, um, property located at, um, 520 East Moore Street, um, the applicant is Mr. Joe Demby, I see we have Andy here as well, um, Lee, can you fill us in before we open up a public hearing?
Okay, so, right now, the, the lot is vacant, it's a little over an acre, it's a 520 East Moore Street, uh, applicants want to rezone it to accommodate, uh, apartments, staff gave a favorable recommendation, the, uh, land use plan calls for it to be R3 or for high-density residential, and, uh, you know, you, you got existing, uh, multifamily next to it already, so, anyway, that's, seen my report.
All right, with that, I will open this one up for a public hearing. Once again, um, you state your name, your address, and you have two minutes. Um, anybody would like to speak on this?
I would.
Okay, Andy?
Um, I'm, I'm, I was asked to, uh, represent this for Joe Demby, uh, we, uh, we did this survey on the property, we've got it, uh, hopefully Kenny Sadler, um, will be doing the, the site plan for it. What Joe is wanting to do is something similar to this, which is something that I helped Greg Curl do in Shelbyville, and what it is, is just a, a block of, of multifamily units, very nice-looking, uh, perfect for, uh, college students or, uh, UTSI students. I'm not sure how to show, how to show better than that.
Not a problem. All right, anybody else would like to speak for the public hearing? With that, I'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion so we can start discussion.
Move to approve.
Ray Knowles, second.
That was Ms. Blackwell that had moved to approve, all right, um, open for discussion. Do we have any questions for Mr. Bass? Anything?
Same water question that I had before. Um, you know, I, I, again, I, I see a lot of flooding in that, in those areas back there, a lot, and I hear from a, a lot of people around him, I'm just wondering if there are any controls you guys are thinking in place to, to mitigate that?
Are you asking me or the applicant?
I'm asking the applicant.
Um, yes, uh, the, the, uh, the law, the rules for the, for the city will require a, uh, a full detention basin that will, uh, uh, improve whatever drainage issues there may be there. Um, the way, we, we've already done a full topography, uh, geographic survey on it, uh, I know that it drains back to the back, and that there's, uh, plenty of fall for the water to, uh, to exit the property, of course, the detention basin will, um, will, will kind of choke some of that down, so the, the neighbors should see an improvement on, on their drainage, uh, once this is done.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Any other questions, comments?
I just wanna add that, uh, I just wanna add real fast that, uh, when they do get their plans together, this will come back to you guys for approval of the site plan.
Okay. Mr. Warsham, you wanna add something? I see your pencil up.
You're on mute, Steve.
Mute.
No. Okay, I didn't know if that was you asking for a question, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'd, I'd let you know that if I were, thank you.
I have a question, did, uh, Mr. Demby have a similar development that came before this commission recently, in the same, was that in the same area? What proximity was that to this one?
That was down, um, West Lincoln, um, going towards, um, you know, Lynchburg, past, it would be past, you know, Cedar Lane, heading south.
So, not, not in the same area, okay?
Not in the same area. All right, well, if we don't have any other questions, I will call it, and we will have our vote. Um, Paul Schwaber?
Approve, ne- uh, aye.
Yeah, approve, that's fine, just say approve. Mr. Knowles?
Aye.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
And I will approve as well, so, all right, motion passes. All right, now we get to have another zoning amendment, or zoning request, so, we move that a favorable mention. All right, so this one is for Tennessee Vascular and Thoracic Surgery and Associates, it's located at 315 Northwest Atlantic Street, Telehome, um, from a warehouse district I1 to a general commercial C2, three properties located, um, 1801, 1807, 1808. Lee, what do you got for us?
Uh, the applicant, uh, they've moved their, the applicant is actually Tennessee, uh, let me get up, here, uh, Tennessee Vascular and Thoracic Surgical Associates, uh, they were, what they've done is they've moved their offices from their original office, which was 1801 North Washington, down onto Northwest Atlantic Street, which used to be a call center, you know, it's the split-level one behind the, behind the, what is that, uh, the bank there, uh, Bank USA or something like that, USA Bank?
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's where they've moved to, um, they were getting a zoning letter, I told them that being that it was zoned I1, that, uh, they had six months from when they moved out to put another office in, or an office wouldn't be used by right because it was its own industrial, so they, uh, decided they would rezone it, but couldn't rezone just their property, so had to rezone three of them to avoid the spot zoning issue. The other two, uh, lots are already being used as medical offices or as offices as well, so they were notified by certified mail, just like the previous case with the, with the owners that were not a party to the, that, to the application. The, uh, the land use plan does call for it to be, uh, commercial in that district, and staff gave it a favorable recommendation.
All right, um, I will open this to a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment? Once again, state your name and your address, and you have two minutes. Anybody here want to do that?
Um, yes, my name is Carol Kirksey, I am the business manager for Tennessee Vascular. Um, we were located at one time at 1801 North Washington Street, and we had our building reappraised, um, not too long ago, and found, and deter- and it was determined by the appraiser, uh, Mr. Joe Smith, that it was zoned as an I1, which is warehouse. We've always been a medical office since, uh, that building was built, um, so I just was going on the advice of Mr. Smith to have it rezoned commercial.
Okay, um, all right, is there anyone else that'd like to speak in the public hearing? If not, I will close it, and, um, I will entertain a motion to begin discussion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Knowles and Ms. Blackwell was the second. Um, as we opened this up, um, and being on the commission for a while, I think this is going back to where there was a overlay change in this area, we had to rezone several residential properties that was also I1 from this, they actually butted up to this, um, am I correctly?
Yeah, they're across North Washington Court.
Yes, so, um, I think this is us just fixing something that happened in the past, um, that's just my opinion, any other questions?
Can I ask a question about that, Lee? Uh, so, I feel, we've done, so I, I've been on here, what, almost a year, and I feel like I've, no, more than that, I feel like we've seen, done this a couple times in this area, is there a way to go back through it and try to correct, or look at what we, happened in, I think it was 2007, you said, and, um, you know, come back at it with a different, and, and change the overlay, or is that not feasible?
Uh, yes, we need a, updated zoning map and land use plan, absolutely.
Well, uh, we can do that, it wouldn't be feasible for staff to be able to do it with, with, along with the daily duties that we already have, we don't have the staff to do it in-house, uh, there would be, have to be something that would be done, uh, you know, it'd have to be approved through the budget by the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to, uh, to budget that money and to allow us to go out and get a, a consultant to be able to work on that, to create a new land use plan, and in turn, create a new zoning, uh, ordinance and zoning map.
Yes, but I would just like to say that the one that we're currently using was created by two people who were on staff and have absolutely zero experience or education in planning. I mean, they basically just colored the corridors red, so...
Yeah, they did that during the housing bubble, when there wasn't any work to be done, so they were trying to fill it, I assume, trying to do something that, yeah, they were not qualified to do, but nevertheless, they were in a different circumstance as far as the economy was going at the time when they did it.
Well, if there's any Alderman listening, I think that we should make it a priority to update our land use plan.
But, but can I ask a question, Lee? How expensive is that? How expensive, what, I mean, what, um, I, I'm, I'm, I know I'm probably asking you questions that you were not expecting right now, but I just was wondering, you know, what a feasibility is for that, and, and, um, just wondering.
Well, we, we tried to get this done a few years, a couple years back, uh, we had a firm that, that gave us a, a quote of $138,000 to do the city, which in, uh, do the whole development plan over, uh, couldn't get that money together, uh, to be able to do it, but that was theirs, and that was like a couple years ago, uh, so, I mean, it, it, in all, in all, the, the price, that's usually about the going rate's gonna be over $100,000, um, it could be higher depending on if there's any special, uh, studies that we want done with it, like a housing study, for them to do a, a, a really thorough outreach, uh, as far as trying to get people to come in and them be down here and, and engage the community.
So, it ain't cheap.
Not, I confirm that. The only, the other option would be that you came up with a, a more general approach, identified that, and then you could break it down and do small area plans, and then use those to inform the larger picture. That sometimes in, during the last recession, people use that approach, uh, other communities, but, this probably, um, some, they, they probably are asking that we just make a ruling on this, the rezoning that we have before us right now.
Do we have any other questions according to the zoning, um, up there? If that's the, uh, we will call the question, and I will ask everybody. Paul Schwaber?
Uh, move to approve, or, aye.
Mr. Knowles?
I'm standing.
All right, um, Mr. Comer?
Yeah.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Aye, yes.
Aye as well, so, um, we will move, send a favorable, uh, favorable, favorable, what's the word I'm looking for? I lost it.
Recommendation.
Had to look at it. Um, to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for this change. All right, the, uh, last thing we have is a text amendment. Is that, did it, I guess it has a public hearing with it as well, as, no?
Yes, it does.
It does have, yeah, zoning text amendment. This has a public hearing as well. This is, um, zoning text amendment 223, micro breweries, distilleries, and wineries. Um, Lee, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I did a study on this, uh, looked at a lot of different communities. If you've read the background summary of, uh, you know, districts they allow this in, uh, the size of the operation, and of course, uh, some development standards as far as, you know, when it, uh, there's conflict between it and any type of residential type of uses. Uh, so it, it, uh, encompasses a couple of, well, three new, uh, definitions for micro breweries, micro distilleries, and one for micro wineries. It, it sets a limit as far as, you know, what would be construed to fall into that category. Anything, uh, more than, than what they're, what's suggested in the, in the text would be considered to be, uh, uh, more of an industrial use production. And so that would be allowed in the I1 or I2 districts. Uh, but this is something to allow, uh, these type of businesses in our commercial districts, which it's not addressed right at this moment in our ordinance.
All right, um, open this for public hearing. Anybody would like to speak on this?
I can say that, um, my husband has worked on many projects like this in other communities, and this type of, uh, micro brewery, micro distilleries, micro wineries, they, they all fit in well even in residential areas. And they're not, I, I see absolutely zero problem with including them in a commercial district.
All right.
Old Shed currently zoned?
Zoned C2.
Do we need to make a motion before we have a discussion?
Yeah, I need to, I need to close the public hearing. Let's close the public hearing, and then, uh, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
That was Miss Blackwell. Paul's second. And now, where we go. Yeah, now your answer was C2, is that correct, Lee, for Old Shed?
Yes, it's, it's zoned C2.
May I ask another question, Lee? So I, I read through, I saw that you are basing the space off of Seattle sizing-wise?
Well, it was, it was, I looked at multiple sizes. It, it seemed to be a little bit more, I guess in my opinion, more sink. You guys might disagree, said, think they might need something smaller or larger.
Well, and that was my question, is do you think that that, um, that it's, that's an appropriate size? And, and where, why you came up with that? And then my other question, I had two questions. I'll just put them out there to you, so then I can shut up and go on mute. The other question was, um, what prompted this discussion?
Uh, well, it was that, uh, there was a look at, uh, micro brewery or, or opening up one in the, in the downtown area next to London's. Uh, really had no, uh, nothing in the ordinance that either even allowed it or didn't allow it, it just, uh, the Old Shed, I don't know the history behind, behind the approval of that. But we didn't have anything that addressed these particular type of businesses. So this was to create something that would, number one, you know, identify and describe what, uh, you know, what it is and, and, and how, you know, try to mitigate any type of conflict between, uh, residential properties and this type of use, but to allow it, uh, in the commercial districts. Where normally, if, if he was to go by the stricter letter of our zoning ordinance, this wouldn't be allowed except for in industrial districts.
Got it. And, and so the Seattle size, I mean, definitely I saw the other ones looked really big. So Seattle seemed more appropriate.
They have a lot of experience doing that, too.
Yeah, but it's fun up there.
So they went to the growth, they went to the growth pains with it. So I assumed that they, they, you know.
Are there any other air, like, are there other comparable-sized cities in Tennessee that are doing this? And if so, what did that look like?
Yes, absolutely. Lynchburg would be one of them. They're smaller than us. Yeah. And, and I can, I can say that I've worked in multiple cities throughout South Carolina and Georgia of, a similar size or smaller. And again, they fit in well even as, uh, local neighborhood pubs. And this type of business can be critical to economic development and economic recovery, which we all know needs to be at the forefront of all of our minds.
That's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? With that, I'll call the question, and we'll do our vote. Mr. Schwer.
Aye.
Mr. Noahs?
Aye.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Miss Blackwell?
Yes.
Miss Smith?
Aye.
And I'm as aye as well, unanimous. So that is done. And any other new business to be discussed?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, uh, just want to remind you that we have our next meeting on Monday, May the 18th.
With that, any questions, anything?
Is, it, the 18th is the day that the, our, this restriction ends. Are we gonna, is there any plan on doing this virtual, or are we gonna do it in-house? Or is that too soon to ask that question?
I, I think it's a little too soon to ask that question. I'll, I'll get up with the city administrator and, and we'll, we'll go from there. But we'll, we'll give you plenty of, of notice well before the meeting.
But Paul, if we did it in person, you wouldn't get to hang out at the, the Blue Star Memorial. So, I mean...
It's true.
All right, with that, I, um, move, I mean, we adjourn. I don't have to make a motion on that, I don't believe. We can adjourn. Thank you all for doing this, and this has been fun.
Thanks, Jeff.